Excellent, like to welcome everyone to the September 4th. Duffle Planning and zoning meeting, we'll start with you plug of Legans. Plug Legans. And we'll start with you, it up from seven of the tables.
Kathy Parsons, Commissioner.
Jeff DeRosa, alternate, Eric Purpik, alternate, Mike Kozlowski, Commissioner, Paul Shaly, Chair.
Diane Ryan, Commissioner.
Spro Brady, Commissioner.
And online with us.
Paul Bygdon, Commissioner.
Excellent, and staff with us is you.
Dave McCollum, land use coordinator.
Amanda Martinez, recording secretary.
Excellent, and for the record, any personal use of electronic devices is for reviewing the Google Drive publicly available to walk into look at it yourself. We're going to move right into a continued public hearing for E C B Realty LLC, 22 Stony Hill Road.
Good evening, for the record, Dynus Verbicus. I see while David is handing out paper that might be associated with the application.
That is correct.
I will start, then this is the proposed modification to a previously approved gas station with a convenience store and drive-through that was originally approved by the Commission and by the DOT some years ago. There is a new tenant that wishes to occupy the space and and use it as a gas station and convenience store with no drive-through. And we have in prior meetings made presentations with respect to the site plan, the proposed building, landscaping, and so on. We've had several iterations of letters from the review engineer and to which we received a letter today. It's a little bit past two o'clock regarding this application and the comments are generally light, I think. They talk about the truck turning plan for our tractor trailer slash fuel delivery truck. And the the way that our truck turning plan shows the fuel delivery truck coming in to the site from Stony Hill Road. The truck will have to cross over and and drive over the mountable island in the center of the drive. Which is precisely why that island is mountable. And this is a situation that that based on DOT requirements and forcing a right-hand turn only out of the site. And in keeping the drive entrance as narrow as possible. Oftentimes, this occurs on sites where you're looking to drive in bigger trucks. To that end, the the fuel delivery truck makes it into the site and and could we polish the truck turning to to make it bounce a little less over that curb? Sure, we could, we could do that, but the intention here is to show that the truck can make it in. And similar with the smaller delivery box trucks. Again, yep, in some instances, the the truck may need to drive over the mountable curb, but these are commonplace and that's precisely why the DOT makes them mountable. In the DOT's effort to keep the curb cuts narrow, they ask that the mountable curbing be placed so that while the driveways remain narrow, vehicles can utilize or trucks can utilize the entire width should they need to enter and exit the site. So to that end, I think we we meet meet the requirements of both local and more importantly, as the DOT had previously approved this in in almost identical layout, I think that the DOT will also have no issue with the truck turnings as submitted. Comment number two of the letter again talks about the truck turning plan and and the tracking for both of the trucks goes underneath the canopy, which is typical. And that's why canopies are placed roughly fourteen and a half feet above grade at their lowest elevation. So any vehicle that's traveling on state or or interstate roadways can pass underneath without issue. So the comment number two also is a non-issue. Comment number three, the review engineer is requiring soil testing to be conducted on the site prior to approval by the Commission, or he's recommending that it be completed prior to approval. Puts us into a little bit of a bind with respect to timing in that the timing of the application is is such that time will run out for the public hearing prior to prior to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Commission. So in this instance, I suggest that that the Commission consider closing the public hearing and allowing us to submit test results as requested, so really not changing the plan in any way that would affect planning and zoning and site items. And again, we would just be merely submitting supplemental information in response to the engineers' comments. It's commonly done in practice in in other municipalities and and I suspect that in this municipality also the the well, the prior time this was approved, it was approved with the condition of soil testing be conducted prior to installation. And and here again, I'd suggest that that the Commission consider closing the public hearing with with the ability for us to just respond to the engineering comments and not submit any new site plan or site surface related elements aside from drainage comments. I'm happy to answer any questions that the Commission might have, but again, I think I think we're squared away with staff comments and we just have these engineering comments that we need to respond to. Again, thanks.
Thank you, sir. I'll open up to public questions or comments. Does anyone online has any questions or comments about this application? Hearing none, Commission.
Yeah, Paul.
Yes, sir.
This line here says the dedicated exit lane would not be viewed favorably by DOT. So we're clearly going to need to wait for that, right?
Yes, yes, and the DOT seldom acts on an application prior to it having received a local review and approval. And again, we had with the prior application received DOT approval. But as commissions change, so do staff members at the DOT. And we've got new folks at DOT looking at things and and putting in their review comments and and generally more eyes the better. And again, it would be a typical process in which the local municipality makes a recommendation for approval and then approvals are further sought with the DOT. And and again, if there are any changes that the DOT requires, they could, if if there's anything of major consequence, we would likely speak with staff and see if there would be a need for submission for a revised site plan or something of that nature. But again, we don't think that there's going to be an issue like that, again, because DOT previously approved this plan.
And Ken answered your question, that's my understanding as well.
Yeah.
DOT reviews it after us.
Yeah.
And then if there's a significant change that they don't like, then the applicant will come back for a for a site plan adjustment.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Oh, I have a question.
Sure.
Dynus, what do you think is the reason for the soil testing? Is that to say there's no soil contamination or does it have something to do with the drainage system?
No, so so the soil testing that's requested is to confirm existing soil conditions for the storm water management systems that are proposed. So basically dig deep test holes to determine depth to ledge, depth to restrictive layers or groundwater. And and or and excuse me, running of a percolation or infiltration tests to confirm that the soils are indeed what we had estimated them to be. And again, when we designed it, we designed it as conservatively as as possible and and short of there being rock. I think regardless, we would have a decrease in the rate of runoff.
Okay. Any questions over there?
I just, this is Diane, I have a question about, I thought at the last meeting, I had asked about the the location of the storm storm water management that was close to the other neighbor in the back. And you mentioned something about wells and and having to, you know, look at all that. So I was expecting to see something more about that rather than there's no information.
And 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 if you like, I have not used Google Drive, so I'm not sure exactly how it works, but I can share a drawing with you. Or I can just respond verbally that the plans that were submitted, the the storm water management system has been relocated so that it is at least seventy-five feet distant from any neighboring or adjoining water wells. So and and that, of course, did not come back, even though it was a comment on the prior iteration or prior review by the review engineer. It's it's not noted in this letter, so I suspect that everything is in order from the review engineer standpoint.
Mr. Verbicus, I don't I don't mean to interrupt, if if you did want to share your screen, it is the third icon from the right of the end call button.
Okay, present now that one.
That's correct.
Okay. Let's see if I can. Oops, wrong one. Here we go. Ta-da. Thank you for teaching me.
You're welcome.
We'll bill you later.
Okay. I'll pay you as soon as I get paid for this. So this is the, this is the drawing that 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 depicts our utilities. And I'll zoom in to the degree possible here. And this area that I'm circling with my pointer is the location of the revised storm water management system that was in question. And I can't do, okay, I'm having troubles moving, but the wells that that we were concerned with are off to the right side of the screen. And we are with our storm water management system more than seventy-five feet distant from the two things that are called out as wells on the adjoining property. So again, this storm water management system has been relocated as as the review engineer had requested.
Who's the, the? We didn't have a home letter from that on the Google Drive.
Right, and the reason for that was because this, their response comments were received this afternoon. So I would not have had enough time to have placed them in the Google Drive for this meeting.
But they don't mention it.
What's that?
But so they don't mention it, so who thinks it's fine?
That's my understanding as well. But the soil testing is one of the items. Any other questions from the Commission? Dynus, would you, if we were to keep this hearing open, would you have time to do the soil testing by next Tuesday?
Um, yes, yes, we could arrange for that.
Is that enough, would that enough time be for SLR or the the board of powers that need to review it?
It depends on how soon we get the soil test results, as soon as I get them from the applicant, I'll turn them over to our consultant, our engineering consultant and where it's ended their comments. Hopefully, it provides them enough time for them to perform.
All right, so my next, my next question is to everyone on the Commission. I'm going to try your minds, would you rather have a special meeting next Tuesday? To get the proper information before we close this public hearing? Or would you rather close the public hearing and and work under the assumption that we're going to get the soil testing? Paul. Go ahead.
I would close the public hearing and wait for the information to come forward rather than try and rush it forward. And get it, get the information, we're, we still can take some expert testimony after the fact or results after the fact. We make that part of our decision.
Yes, we we could do, when if it if it came time to approve or deny, we can make that a stipulation of of approval or denial that the soil testing comes back proper.
That's, that's exactly what the engineer is not recommending. In their response comments, they're, they're, they make a statement that the soil testing must be completed as part of the design process prior to approval by the State and Zone Commission.
Approval, but not closing of the public hearing, correct?
That's correct.
Exactly.
It's to my understanding that that information that the discovery phase is completed before any new information comes in. Yes, the 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 town's staff and consultants can offer comments after the close of a public hearing, but it's not necessarily new information per se. So if 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 you want to go that route of having information be submitted after the close of the public hearing, you would have to be very specific to say it's only going to be for soil tests. And if the applicant is saying that they would have the time to perform those tests before a special meeting was scheduled on the first, that may be the appropriate route to handle it, it's it's really, the decision comes down to what you would prefer.
Okay. Are we setting a precedent if we don't do that first? I mean, we have other, other ones that we.
Yeah, personally, I feel like we should hold the meeting open.
Yeah.
I'm available for next Tuesday to have a special meeting to get the soil test done, to get the information into the public hearing before we close the public hearing. I never liked getting information after the public hearing. If information's coming in, I feel like we should have this commission have a chance to talk about it and a member of the public should also have a chance to hear about it and talk about it. So I'll take a, I guess, ask you guys, would you be available for a special meeting next Tuesday?
Not me.
Not either, actually. Excellent, we're striking out Eric.
Thank you, Matt, come.
I know.
You're available? Surely now, would you be available next Tuesday for a special meeting? Bob, do you hear me?
Yeah, I'll be available, probably.
Um, seems we only need four and there's two members not here. We have three saying yes.
Of course.
Four saying yes and five as a maybe. Let's, let's continue this and schedule a special meetings for next Tuesday.
Yeah, you would, you would need a motion to schedule that special meeting.
I'll make the motion to schedule a special meeting on Tuesday, October 1st.
Second.
First.
Um.
Oh.
To discuss the E C B Realty at point of Stony Hill Road.
Oh, I'm sorry, who's second?
All in favor? Any opposed? The extensions? Motion passed.
With with the understanding that we have that information available.
Yes.
Yes, and we'll, we'll coordinate closely with staff and I apologize to have you in this position. We'll, we'll do our darnedest to to do for you what you've done for us, so I thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf of our client.
All right.
And me.
So again, the hearings continue to a special meeting on next Tuesday, same time, same place, hearings. In this room. All right, we'll move on to.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yep, good night.
You want thirty-two Henry Street, Spike Plan, a special permit? Laura's yours.
Laura's mine. Great. Steve Frank's full record, license, flash one here, I give you more of the Henry Street group. Stampage and David.
Thank you.
Updated plan, we did also, similar to Dynus, we see comments from SLR today. And kind of how around, they SLR asked to see the existing water sanitary lines, which are avid sanitary, comes down with easement, then crosses over arcs to this building, so we're just going to tap off of the sanitary for here. Water line similarly comes down over to here and also down this way to the building, we're going to tap off to the new building. Originally, when I had gone out there with a licensed Lancer, because I knew New England was very backed up at the time. We did a assumed topographic survey, we assumed the benchmark on the manhole is an elevation hundred and then did field talk. SLR asked, we put it in the, you know, FEMA or USGS system, so I went out there with Matt Reynolds from New England Lancer Bay and off of one of their control points shot the manhole and it showed up right at three elevation three seventy, which is what the state LIDAR of topographic mapping also showed. So we converted the assume system into USGS. So three seventy is a high point here, the FEMA flood zone is three seventy point eight at this location. So the first floor of the building, which is going to be up on columns, is three seventy-two point eight, two feet above me, base flood elevation. So that takes the flood elevation out. So there is also a door on the south side of the building, there'll be stairs and a three-foot sidewalk out to the one on the west side of the building. When the sewer was put in years ago before my involvement, the test pit was dug out here, which is, you know, bank on sand and gravel down to a hundred and eight inches. SLR, similar to Dynus', it asked us to do an infiltration test, I said, you know, we used under the state storm water manual, the state says gravel is eight point two seven inches per hour, we used four inches or fifty percent of it to model it. Todd is asking for an infiltration test, similar to Dynus', I would say, you can put this on next week, we'll go out in the next couple of days, do my infiltration test, give you the information, that issue goes away. But I had done other work on the west side of Henry Street years ago for actually a surveyor that lives there. And he wanted to do a drywall for his roof drains, we dug a test pit there, it's all bank on, this whole section of town is bank on sand and gravel. So the infiltration test is kind of a little ridiculous because gravel is typically way faster than eight inches per hour. It can run ten, twenty inches per hour, so, you know, we're being conservative, but we'll do the test pit and come back next week, so I think that's really it, you know, all the elevations were adjusted, you know, to the USGS. We installed a salt sac in the existing catch basin, which is in the area of construction, there's a detail been added to that. And those are really the, the only changes, so, you know, we'll do the test, I'll get it to David. And then it should be all set next week. So he's got four sets of the inside plus the A2. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Before I open it up to the public, was there anything on the easement, did you guys find anything, oh, that was a topic?
I am currently in communications with the state. After going through several people and that with the railroad department and I emailed again today, because last week, Friday, and yeah, looked at the documents. So hopefully I'll have an answer if we can get on the special meeting on Tuesday, we'll have, or as soon as I get it, I'll send it to David.
Well, I had reached out to staff earlier this week and asked them to look and see if there was easement downstairs in the town clerk's office on file, there was. So I'm, I have a copy of it, if you'd like the easement right here.
Yes.
If you want to, if you wanted to enter that into the, into the public information. Yeah, I'm one of the, as a courtesy to you, I asked the town to look in.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
You have that? And I saw the bottom line where it says that the easement expires at the, at the
end of the
at the end of the construction, but it says it's only six hundred and ninety-five square feet.
Well, that's
I don't speak legal ease, you know, I'm not a lawyer. So I just wanted to, again, give you the option, if you didn't have it already, to know the last meeting.
Well, there's actually two parts to the easing. There's one at back of the property and then the one in front. This, the area you're talking about is here.
Yeah.
The area that we're, we're just looking, there, this is just the, in the egress to the easement here where they would work on the line.
Rail, yeah.
And and reading some of the notes here, it says the easement will automatically terminate once the completion of the project. Yeah, I don't want to go on that and rather have something from the state
and I agree with you.
And it says, okay, you're good to go. Because as I know, we're only a small portion on here, it's not affecting, like I said, we're going to have tractor trailers visit this building on a daily basis. So I mean, we're just moving this entrance to this area over.
Over a little bit.
So again, I'm just waiting for the state.
For the record, the easement doesn't bother me as much, I'm just, I don't want to come back in six months, ten years from now, find out.
And I agree with you a hundred percent.
Or overlook something and you overlook something, exactly.
So, yeah, I'm following up with the state because I'd rather have it black and white that we're good to go.
I agree.
Before we
I agree with you.
So and hopefully, in like, in soon as I get any information, I forward it right to Dan.
Perfect.
And this map should be downtown.
Yeah.
All too.
Paul, can I have the copy of that issue, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ern. You're welcome. Right, is there anyone in public that has any questions or comments about this application? Anyone online? All right, any mission numbers?
If the state doesn't respond in time for next week.
Then I move on to the next. I mean, keeps on going.
Okay.
Hopefully they will, I, again, I sent an email this morning following up on them. Because nobody takes a phone call of the state, everything is like no, it's absolutely every phone call, you get a message, please email me with any questions or concerns, there's no, there's no live phone calls.
On the flip side of that, they also don't email you back, DEP is infamous for that. So that's unfortunately, it's how Hartford works.
So that's it, basically, so I have my understanding is that we're waiting on an answer on the easement and then soil testing and then we should be able, you'll be able to make a decision.
Uh, yeah, uh, the, I know there was concern about the flood, but given the information presented tonight, are we out of that?
Yeah, because the buildings are set up on columns, so
Yeah, so it's
base flood is three seventy point eight, first floor is three seventy-two, two feet above base flood elevation, that's a FEMA standard.
Mr. Mr. Trinkus, do you have a digital version of the revised?
I, I, I can send that to you tomorrow, David, this got done late tonight, so.
So Mr. Shaly, once I receive those digital plans, I will forward those to our engineering consultant.
Get the state approval on them and
Oh, right, hopefully. Uh right, hopefully the revisions address his comments, and if they do, um we'll make a point to uh. Uh the commission can consider closing the public hearing on this, but the special meeting on Tuesday, if they wish, if they wish to add this uh to that agenda.
I actually have another question I wanna bring up to you guys before we do that, before we continue. Um there was talk last meeting about a handicap ramp into the building.
Stair entrance, there's not a requirement to have this building ADA compliant, none of the buildings on the site are.
Are they open, are they, is this office for the?
It's for a tenant that's already there, it's gonna move over.
So it's just offices for them, or is it like a, is it like a sales office that's open to the public?
No, it's not open to.
So it's only basically for offices for employees?
It's employees' offices that uh they're already in an area that's uh. Steve said, there's no ADA compliant. Uh fixtures or anything, other than there's a bathroom. In the the men's room that's ADA compliant and one in the women's room, but to access the building, there's no, there's no ramps or anything of that.
And you don't think anybody who's working there is gonna need that?
Listen, you know, adding to the ADA ramp is a small. Thing, if that's what's gotta be done to get the approval, then we add an ADA ramp.
Well, whether we. Agree on that or not, I mean, before you get a building department.
It's a building department. Issue not too much of P and Z.
Alright, so um. Uh I'll make a motion to continue this public hearing to our special meeting on next Tuesday, October first. And second, all in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Alright, motion passed.
Yeah, right.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, gentlemen, have a good night. Okay, and we're gonna move into a new public hearing. For St. Dre for nine Putnam Park Road, uh eight thirty G affordable housings, I am recused, so I'm gonna turn it over.
Uh I'm gonna read the public notice, uh to appear September thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and September twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Public notice that the Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. In conference room D of the municipal center, one school street, Bethel, Connecticut, at seven PM to hear the following. Tim Draper for property located at nine Putnam Park Road. For a modification application for proposed eight thirty G. Affordable housing development with six units, the property can be found in the assessor's record as map fifty-one, block fifty-six and lot eighty-six. A link to review the materials can be found on the town's website, www dot Bethel dash C T dot gov. The public may send comments via regular mail and email to landuse at Bethel dash C T dot gov. Parking for hearing is located to the rear of the building, Kitty Grant Vice Chairman. Just to let the public know, I know some of you are probably here for this, we are actually just opening the hearing, we are actually not going to be taking any public testimony. Or any questions at this moment. Um as David will explain.
Yes, I I I will do my best to concisely give the context for how we got to where we are tonight. Um as the commission may recall, uh I said during uh the previous meeting when the commission accepted this application. Uh this application is is being accepted per Connecticut general statute eight dash thirty G subsection H. Which allows the applicant to submit a modification to uh this applicant uh to their. Application that was previously denied, have that be subject to a public hearing process, which would. Uh which would be for a period of fifty-five days. That period begins when um that modification application was accepted. Which I'm forgetting what the date is off the top of my head, but. Bottom line is, is that that sixty-five days, that nominal period expires in the middle of October. Um the prompt for having the public hearing open tonight was to try to give the planning and zoning commission. The a- as much time as as could be afforded for them to uh get the testimony that they needed. From the applicants, from experts, from the public, uh to address the contact using the resolution of denial. Um since that meeting took place on 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 September tenth. Uh an application was submitted to the inland wetlands commission. As as uh. As a response by the applicant to address one of those uh items listed in the resolution of denial. Uh then the wetlands commission accepted an application, uh and that will be a a public hearing also. That will open on October twenty-eighth, which is a Monday, seven PM in this room. Um they're also going to be holding a site walk on um Saturday, October twenty-sixth. Um had we known that before uh we had the planning and zoning commission had accepted this application. To uh and and had the public hearing open tonight, um there wouldn't have been the prompt to get the. Um uh butters notices out, which you may have all received in the mail, saying that the public hearing opens tonight. That requirement uh for the butters notices, it's it has to be satisfied, for it to be satisfied, that notice has to be. Fifteen days before the public hearing opens. Well, if everybody counts from the tenth to the twenty-fourth, that's only fourteen. So the the applicant's counsel and our counsel agree, the way to remedy that would be to. Have the public hearing open tonight and have it continue to the commission's regular meeting on October twenty-second. The reason why we're not doing the eighth is because the eighth has been reserved. Uh the 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 commission wanted to have that uh meeting be designated for a public information session for the TOD. So uh that that's uh where where we are right now. I'm happy to answer any questions, as long as it's not diving too much into testimony, we're just speaking the justice.
Generic questions.
That's correct.
Apologize for any confusion there.
So we don't get to ask any questions?
Not tonight about this project specifically, if you have general questions about. But technically, the public hearing is open, is what you're saying?
So the so the public here, so the public hearing opens tonight and it will uh. The 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 commission uh should have it scheduled to be continued at the regular meeting on October twenty-second. At that meeting, and in all persons who we heard, uh it it'll be uh. Uh a a public hearing as uh, you know. A- as this commission would conventionally recognize it to be, where you have the applicant offer comments, you have the town's experts present to offer comments. So on and so forth. Yes.
Can you tell us, are we allowed to find out what is the modified portion of the plan?
I I don't want to discuss that without not with the applicant not being present.
No problem.
But the clock is ticking.
And when do we have to decide?
So this is uh this is uh why it was so critical for the inland wetlands commission application to be submitted. There's a um section in the planning and zoning commission regs, eight point four point C, C points ten. And that allows the planning and zoning commission to have an extra thirty-five days to render a decision after. The inland wetlands commission renders their decision. So you have essentially however much time the inland wetlands commission needs plus thirty-five days. So that thirty-five day clock will. Will start counting down when the inland wetlands commission renders their decision, but not sooner.
What's the fifteen day uh time threshold?
So 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 there there is a period per statute where a butters notices have to be sent. To anyone within one hundred feet of the applicant's property.
Right.
Okay, a- a- and that that fifteen days did not, would not have expired. Um before getting to tonight's meeting, which is why. Uh the best way to remedy that is to have the public hearing continue on October twenty-second.
Basically, yeah, tomorrow would be the fifteenth day.
Right.
Uh everybody that have that fifteen days will be able to come here tonight.
Are we getting another a butters notice? Fifteen days from the time that we, that it should have, that it should have been?
No, that would be the only a butters notice since the public hearing is is now.
So so there will be a separate butters notice that goes out for the inland wetlands commission application. Because that's also, it's going to be reviewed by public hearing. And that public hearing process will, so so there's two public hearing processes that are ongoing for this property. The planning and zoning commission uh could have their. Uh public hearing continue on October twenty-second. The inland wetlands commission could have their public hearing process open the following Monday, October twenty-eighth.
I I I'm still confused, because you talked about sixty-five days.
Are are we losing some of those days now? No, no, so 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 that sixty-five days, that is only relevant if you didn't have it. Inland wetlands commission application, but because now you do, that period doesn't matter as much. So so that's. At at all, be- because because now this commission has however much time the inland wetlands commission needs. Plus thirty-five days. Well, I I I'm not sure, because their public hearing doesn't open until October twenty-eighth.
You have another question?
Michael, I have a couple of questions.
For anyone that has any additional questions, I my my recommendation would be. Come and see me or 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 contact the land use office, I I would be happy to discuss this.
It just seems like we're saying it's a public hearing, but we're not, but it's not a public hearing. So sometimes we'll open it, just to kind of, again, normally to start the clock and everything else, but that, because of the wetlands application. That kind of throws. Traditional timeline.
This this isn't the first circumstance where this has happened, a- a- another situation would be where like tonight. You have the applicant not necessarily be uh ready to have all of their response comments. And so they they would say, w- we're just finally providing this response. We would advise the commission to open the public hearing, but to immediately continue it. So that way um we can uh offer our ourselves and the town more time to provide responses. A- and make sure that uh comments are addressed, so this this isn't unfamiliar unfamiliar territory, I should say.
So when was Mister Trinkus and his client notified because his client didn't show up? But I left work early to come here for a hearing.
Right, right, so um wait, I'm I'm sorry, can I?
When when was Mister Trinkus and his client notified that there wouldn't be any questions or any hearing tonight?
I I can say that, I understood, and I I was here in the off uh office today as well. And we were on this option till right before the meeting, that we would actually not be hearing any testimony tonight. That was, that was when the two attorneys right before this meeting spoke to each other.
In the letter that we got, that is in the Google Drive, you know, Marcus said we wouldn't be here. Which I assumed that they would be here.
Right, and then it was decided this afternoon, late, late this afternoon, right before a meeting between the town attorney and the client and the. Applicant's attorney, that we would open it and and immediately continue.
Does does this benefit the us, the the abutting properties, or is this uh time trick?
I I don't, I I can't speak to that.
But like I said, I I would be happy to discuss this uh offline. They contacted me at the office tomorrow, or uh or 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 call the land use office and I and I perhaps. Because I I just don't wanna uh be legal of a point. Uh a- a- and I I think I I could give you more time to 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 describe the the logistics. Uh and why, how we got where we are tonight.
Is it, was this the same thing that we did uh last time with this, when the original application was uh accepted and? Do we do the all the? The uh wetland commission, their timeframe and that was done in previous?
So the previous application didn't have a wetlands component to it. It was our our rendered decision of a of a denial that brought this upon.
So just for, just so we know, we 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 still have, will have the opportunity to. Absolutely. Just now, just now, right now.
Just now, tonight, unfortunately.
Absolutely. For for the planning and zoning commission, October twenty-second, that's correct.
Do we have to do any sort of?
Well, I I I would just, I would just have a consensus from the commission to continue this public hearing to the twenty-second.
Alright, uh consensus for continuing this public hearing to October twenty-second, all in favor?
So so then just make a statement saying that this public.
This public hearing will be continued to October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
You've got the dates of the other stuff.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Alright, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Eric is tapped. For Kitty Grant. And Eric, you stated for the record?
Yeah, just uh that I am up to speed on the.
Uh has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of our September tenth meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I have one change to make.
Those aren't changes. Looking at what what's the, what's written on there?
Uh yeah, is that not you?
No, no, that's that's from, don't, don't look at that.
Oh, okay, never mind, I I take that back. Second. All in favor? Any uh opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. Uh do we have any invoices?
Is Doug Cooney the person that was that uh Jeff was replacing in the new business on those minutes?
Doug. Doug's uh for Mike.
Right, but it said.
That, yes, because it's it's correct, and Doug was sat for the for the.
Right, for that.
For the work session.
Right, but Mike wasn't here and he was the full member.
Yeah, so when Doug refused himself from that um new business for the nine Putnam Park. Is when Jeff was sat. For Doug, who was sat for money. Replacement there, but yes, that's, I understand how that can be confusing, it could be a second, as you were saying. Uh do we have any invoices?
No, I was just for that meeting.
No invoices. Into the work session for NIL RA Realty Corp, one sixty-five grassy plain.
I have a draft resolution of approval, as the commission requested at the last meeting for your review. Who's uh? Who's seated for this spot there?
Eric is. Thank you.
Okay. Do you also got a copy or?
Yeah.
Okay. I know I I I just didn't know if you were.
I don't get the same thing, so.
Okay, yeah.
Deal it, right?
For sure.
Absolutely not.
Can't say it.
You're in the dark.
I can't say. Uh, number two, is that my back? Architectural plan sheet, set title new construction, three townhouses.
Oh dear, excuse me. Please strike condition two. My apologies.
Is is the whole thing struck or just the?
Please, please strike all of comment of of all of condition two, please.
I read it like twice.
I I I'm glad I I kept that in there to make sure you were keeping attention.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, wondering where the townhouses were going. Oh, yes, son of a gun.
Alright, hang on Bob.
That's what I just saw them.
You're not gonna be left in the dark, Bob. But come come to the rescue.
No, dear. I can't get to that further. Oh, hang on, he's.
Jeff brought up a good point here.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Oh, you can't give any.
Okay, Bob, if you're familiar with the movie Star Wars, I'm gonna put the resolution on the screen and scroll it, okay? Just like the opening credits. How's that?
That's good.
Good.
Music for the background of that?
A well-read uh alternate on the commission pointed out condition four, just the the direction. The directional component here is wrong, the northeastern most corner of the property. I believe the the tree we talked about is in the southeastern.
Good catch.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so.
Northeastern, southeastern.
Let me let me make sure. Bob, did you need me to scroll back up this section?
I read it.
Alright, so while everybody's getting to watch this, we're gonna strike comment to or condition two, right?
Right.
That's gone. And we're going to change the section or the language in now, condition three. Instead of reading as northeast, and it's going to read as south.
Condition four, correct. That's a big tree to move.
And the cottonwood is a deciduous, we all, that that did appear to be a deciduous tree, right? It's not. Just, cause I don't know what type it is and rather leave it open ended than.
You had mentioned at the last meeting about the. Whether it was really brick at the bottom versus. Near. Yeah, so do we need to have that written in here? What that, I mean, cause we didn't really know.
What language would you want to use to address that?
Let me review by town architect to be, no.
Yeah, that's that's town architects only, like downtown village district.
Yeah, this is, this is not in the village district, otherwise.
When it comes to architectural, we can't, I've had this discussion, we can make suggestions. Outside of certain areas of the town, right? That when we have a architectural review, that's like the TOD village district area of the town.
Okay.
Anywhere else, we can make suggestions, they can say, thank you for suggestions. And kind of move on their way.
Okay.
But um.
So does it have to say that it's according to the drawings that were?
It does, that's what number one is.
Okay.
Well, nu- number one address is the site plans. Uh, I I wasn't able to locate.
Not part of the site plans?
Well, I I wasn't able to locate if 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 there was a formal sheet for the renderings that the commission saw. I- if you'd like me to try to address. Uh, or or add that language in there somehow without having not a bona fide plan to use. I can certainly attempt that.
Did they not?
They did show, right?
They showed one, did they not submit it for the record?
Uh, yes, but but it it's it's not, it wasn't presented as as a bona fide.
And that question in general, like, is that normal practice? Like, we like. Feel like most projects come in with a set of architectural, at least a floor plan elevations and and as you're describing them.
Right.
Architectural set. And we don't really have that.
Right. I I would, I would, if if Beth were here, I would defer the question to her. Um, cause just, cause you are right, for for some industrial buildings, they will have. A full set of building plans for to go. I I don't know if the advocate in this particular instance. Has the interior floor plans hashed out as much as they know the footprint of the building and.
Well, they have that. They have renderings.
They have exterior elevations, but they don't have anything in the way of.
You can look on the Google Drive, right? Can you bring that up?
Sure.
Tell off better.
My Bob, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get off the page here.
That's all, exactly, uh, just no update.
Sometimes we're.
I haven't seen an update from.
Let me go.
Working in the dark.
Yeah, but it should be on the Google Drive.
I don't know where we even looked at it.
Actually, I mean, I was looking at the Google Drive.
It was just on the screen. It wasn't up here.
Uh, right, right, right.
They show those last minutes.
Right, right, right.
But they weren't here to answer the question.
Yeah.
I mean, I I can. You want me to put them up on the screen?
Yeah.
Sure?
So Mike, I I don't know if you saw these.
I didn't see them in the Google Drive, I, you know.
At least today, unless I I missed it.
Prior to them submitting these.
They're not, these.
Oh, yeah, these these are the old ones.
The old ones.
These are the.
Right, everybody talked about the big green box. And then this is what they submitted last time.
And they showed the front with uh.
And they showed the front with.
And the side.
Appears to be brick. We we have a closer of that somewhere, yeah, I really don't.
That's it, yeah.
And appears to be brick and I just innocent question on my part, is that brick or are they just painting it that color? Or what are they doing? It was just curiosity question.
Or was it?
That's a good question.
Or on the outside.
But you're saying we can, we can only make a recommendation.
Right. We can't. But it was my understanding.
But can we? Have it dependent on looking like the latest design rendering? On our draft?
Why can't we make that a condition of approval that if the final appearance of the building is to.
Match this.
Yeah, to match, to represent.
Drawings.
The.
Well, let me.
Provided.
Let me try to prepare something and uh see what the commission says. Okay. The exterior.
Kind of commission would like to see the.
Faces of the proposed.
Proposed thing.
Structure.
What, can you do that?
Shall match or be.
Well, what they're showing us, if that's what they want.
Or be designed.
We can agree to request.
With the proposed. With the elevation.
A lot of this just gets negotiated in the office.
Yeah, and I got it, I got it.
Most recent elevations has presented to the. I I I I don't, I don't know. I don't know how how how. If 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 someone were to question the language on this draft, I I I don't know. What the commission has to. To uphold such a such language like that, to to say, hey, this is, this is what you showed us, now you can have to build it like this.
Well, we didn't want it all.
Because a- and I say this because if if there's some building code comment that comes back that essentially says, hey. This isn't going to work, now you're gonna have to do this again.
Not the whole thing, they would come up to us, let it change, right?
No, 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 I'm 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 talking about i- if 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 the exterior. Face of the building, if if the way it looks on this rendering. If 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 the uh if whoever builds that addition. If they're unable to make this code compliance for the building department, then.
Well, that trumps everything, right?
Right, right.
This handicap round today. Can you put in there if? I I see where everyone's coming, can you put in there if if the if the final architectural drawings? Are to change from what was presented, can they be re-brought or is that?
I I think that's a much more flexible condition that.
And we wanna see it, like, I I understand that it's a work in progress.
We can review it.
But we could be able to review it once they're finalized.
Here, how how about, how about we do this? Uh, any altera- any alterations to the exterior face. Of the proposed structure as shown. In the renderings.
Start a date on them.
Presented to the commission. On September tenth. Twenty twenty four.
Yeah.
Shall be. Re-reviewed. Or shall be reviewed. By the commission.
It's the render.
Yeah. For their consideration. How's that, how does that work?
Can you read it again altogether?
A- any alterations to the exterior faces of the proposed structure as shown in the renderings presented to the commission on September tenth, twenty twenty four. Shall be reviewed by the commission for their consideration.
I think that makes sense.
Great. Uh uh, I I hope the word shall isn't an overreach on the commission's part. I I don't think it is. Uh.
I don't think it is either. I don't think it is. Good.
It means that that's to happen.
That's condition number seven?
Uh, that would be, I I I put it in here as condition five. So so so. Well, un- unless, uh, well, yeah, do you want me to add that at the end? Yeah, all at the end, I'm sorry. So, yeah. So that'll be. Stop, Bob, I'm gonna put it back up on the screen again so you can see it, okay? Alright, so these are the conditions again. Oh, there's one slight tweak I have to make. Here, just gonna swap out, it's an and. Put in a period. Take us this period. Put the and under there. There you go. Any other questions?
Let it be said, let it be written.
Can you change this to other thing to southeastern, right?
That's correct. So, the uh, Mr. Shannon, do you do you wanna read the revised conditions out loud just so? Everybody's on the same page? Or let me, let me, let me uh zoom in on them on the screen so you can see them, okay? Uh.
Everything's the same except for the numbers, right?
How's this?
Well, I'm gonna give it to the quatcho.
Yeah. We just can't.
No, can you roll down a seven, please? Excellent, alright. Uh, just leave it right there, David, please. Uh, I make a motion to approve a site plan special permit applications to the following application. This project involves construction of two thousand square positions existing manufacturing warehouse, close parking, remote improvements, socially expansion. Uh, this property owned by NILR Realty Group. Uh, it is subject to the following conditions, one, accepted as modified, the project shall be constructed in accordance with the site plan sheet. Set site plans titled NILR Realty Corp, one sixty five grassy plain street, Connecticut, dated May sixth, twenty twenty four. With a revision date August ninth, twenty twenty four, that's prepared by Dinesh Raviakis of Art Engineering Group LLC. Number two, prior to the issue issuance of a zoning permit, a finalized finalization plan for phasing shall be reviewed by the commission. Three, the specimen deciduous tree located near the southeastern most corner of the property. Towards the business park sign over is shown on the site plans shall be preserved. Four, the applicant shall comply in or address any and all force from the public utilities director, director of health. Towns engineering consultant, who's S I S L R International Corporation, and partner martialized appropriate at time of construction. Five, prior to the commencement of any site construction, all erosion and sediment control measures shall be installed and maintained in accordance to for. According, the notes on the drawings.
Fix that.
In accordance to the notes on the drawings.
Thank you.
In in conformance with two thousand two C P guidelines for soil erosion and sediment control. E N S measures until the site is fully stabilized, commission and or designated agent may require additional E N S measures as needed throughout the construction. Bonds may be required in the form of a letter of credit and or cash. Condition number seven, any alterations to the exterior faces of the proposed structure shown in the renderings presented to the commission on September tenth. Twenty twenty four shall be reviewed by the commission for their consideration. Reasons, the commission has carefully considered the application with regard to the project's location, its site design has determined this project will not imperil the health, safety and welfare of the community. One second?
Second.
Change to a second, and I'll do a roll call vote. And Kenny? Eric?
I still wish you were at it beside what, but yes.
Mike, yes. I'm a yes.
A hand, yes.
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 Motion passes. Uh, we're gonna move on to commission comments. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, comments? Just kind of.
In general. I guess I do it. It's your, um, yeah, when we get updated plans, everybody's supposed to be uploaded to the Google Drive, so we'll add them. Review.
In general?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, as a project develops, we get more, more plans, like, and I know some were submitted today for Henry Street.
Unfortunately, you'll see that that's kind of a a regular occurrence, it's um. For both our engineers and applicants' engineers typically tend to uh slide in right their line. Uh, and that happens unfortunately more than it does. But yes, that stuff is trickling in, it's always added.
I can go to the Google Drive and I should.
Give you some review.
Items.
Yeah.
The the Google drives for the meeting agenda or or for the meetings are are um. The the Google Drives for the meeting agenda or or for the meetings are are um. The Lynch for those, I believe they become officially live when they're gonna get posted. The Friday, is it Friday or the Thursday?
It's um, I I file it on Thursday, but I share, I email to you all on Friday.
Okay, so so that's, so that's when uh this, the the commission should really focus on. Uh, looking at the drive to that, that's when uh. Everything that that should be in there should be in there.
Wouldn't it be helpful to, I know it might be a lot of work for you, to give us an email that says. These are the new things that have been added or changed in the drive that we should look at?
Um, I can talk to Beth about that and um.
I look today.
Uh huh.
Because if there's anything new.
Yeah.
Then I see that there's still a lot of things missing.
Well, some sometimes we we don't get it to like the last minute and we're not able to upload it to the Google Drive right away.
Or we never done it. Right, and like in some ways.
Right, right, well, we we can't control it, if the applicant brings materials with them.
Yeah.
To the meeting. Then there's no way to get it to you any sooner than when they get it to you.
Yeah, but we'll always like, like the stuff that we just got, like, uh tomorrow, I'll stamp it and I'll put it in a Google Drive.
Yeah.
I know you don't, won't have it.
Right.
Before it, but.
Cause the public also can't see any of it.
Yeah, yeah, but but the link that that's posted on the agenda um. Is alive, is this, is the same link, so like, for example, if a public hearing just opened today, the same link will be. Live. So they can go, they could go look at it anytime, the link doesn't change.
Right.
So like, if something just got sent today, they can, we can submit it tomorrow and they'll still have it to look for the next meeting.
Hey Paul, something I've been thinking about is uh. I'm busy meetings where there's a lot of people coming to talk. Maybe we should should consider public input at the beginning, I mean, so they don't have to wait. An hour or even two and a half hours sometimes. Just a thought to think about.
That's actually a very good thought, and I've uh, I had the same idea about a month ago. Uh, and I had a meeting with Beth about that, and she made a really good point. And the example you all use is the people here today were here to talk about nine apartment park, well, if you have public input at the beginning. My guess is they're all gonna stand up and wanna start talking about that application.
Hmm.
And then that's, now you're taking testimony outside of the public hearing. So, and then if you try to explain that to someone that's not up to speed on these rules, that I'll admit, I'm still learning. I think we all are, and some of you have been on this board much longer than I have. Um, now you run to the issue that the public just thinks you're silencing them. So, i- it's like, I I I agree with you, I I, so then it's a tough call because you wanna. Uh, I think, I think planning and zoning is one of the only boards that takes public input at the end of the meeting.
Wettens does it too.
Wettens does, for that exact same reason.
That's right.
For the exact same reason, I assume that's what you're about to say.
Z B A does it too.
Z B A, okay, so. All the, yes, I I agreed. Uh, cause I feel bad too for these people that are sitting here and they're sitting and some of them, we've all seen it, somebody will come up, ask one question and then leave after sitting here for two and a half hours, it's like. You know.
It it's it's unfortunate that the process has to work this way in in some circumstances, but. I- i- it is a result of. Well, that, that and. Who knows how many instances of of case law where you've had issues of testimony not necessarily being received. In the appropriate fashion, it should have been.
Exactly, so that's where that comes from.
Yeah, no problem.
You you could only, you'd really only be opening it up to um. Uh, just like timeline questions and and how things work questions, and again, someone's always gonna start walking in that line into. The applications. Uh, maybe the same with someone, now I talk about an application, we'd have to tell them. You can't, but they've already had their their time to talk, so. Oh, yes, sir.
Uh, uh, uh. What happens this evening is 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 an example of a a problem with these people sitting there for an hour or more listening to stuff. That has nothing to do with their project, but. By the same token. You can't have them discussing it uh. Out of a public hearing when we have an active public hearing, it's gonna, you know, take testimony.
Yeah.
And and that's what Beth is trying to say, i- i- you you have to limit that a little bit. And it's a, but maybe this, this evening, what could have happened is. Somebody knew why all those people were there.
Look, may, may I offer a.
Spots the ones that come, you know, when when she's here at a meeting, she she spots them and and will go over and speak to them and say that they. There'll be no testimony taken.
Yeah.
Just open into the public hearing.
Yeah, Beth has done that before.
The 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 the, the best way to to remedy this circumstance. And and if, and if hindsight is always twenty twenty, but i- if 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 the commission uh or i- if. If there is a circumstance similar to this, um. The chair can uh or staff can always ask the chair to alter the agenda so that way that item is. Brought up on the agenda first.
Yep.
So that way you can get that. Upfront a- and done there aware that it's appropriate and then continue about your business as. Though the meeting is taking place in the normal order.
Which in hindsight, we should have done.
Well, that's, yeah.
But this has happened before too, where. You know.
Well, in the future.
People aren't gonna be here.
In the future, I'll uh.
Showed up.
We'll make sure that that we can try to move things along, if if we know a meeting is gonna be continued. We can uh, do you need a motion to adjen- amend the agenda?
Yes, you do.
So if we need, if in the future, if we know, you know, it's not even gonna get continued, no, with no uh testimony. We'll just take a motion, we'll move it to the first item on the agenda, and that way, anyone that's here, we don't waste their time.
Is it legal to ask the public at early on, like, a roll call, almost like, what project are you here for?
You 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 really shouldn't be fired, sit out of this house.
That sounds like a slippery slope.
No, I know, I just, I just wanted to.
Wondering that too.
I know, I don't like it, I'm just curious, like, cause you could tell, like, okay, you know who's with what project, and you're like, okay, those are bases.
I- i- in some circumstances, the the commission may have the benefit of familiarity. Or 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 a a recurring face, if if you happen to know someone. Or if you happen to know uh whether or not they're uh in proximity to a a a certain property, but but you you shouldn't always.
No.
Want to assume that.
I also, you have to be courteous to the people ahead of the agenda, cause they might have left work early too, and.
Sure, that's right, and you know, it is learning, so.
Yeah.
That's why we have the agenda, it's uh, unfortunately, that happened tonight. Yeah, probably gonna happen again, but.
Because you you could actually reverse the problem by by putting the uh. Public comment at the beginning, all those people could up and speak for hour, hour and a half.
Yeah.
Uh, 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 and really block the people that came thinking they were gonna be the first on the agenda.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
The public doesn't need to know downside themselves on any.
They do. Well, they weren't, they weren't, we weren't taking testimony tonight, they were.
Okay.
Yeah. If they were, if they were, if it was part of of the minutes for that particular project, then they would have identified themselves. That's right.
Yeah.
Your deal? Yeah, one real quick, and it just kind of just happened with this last project for for Grassley Plain there, like. It's my perspective, and again, you guys will already come from, but. Should it be that somebody should have architectural like drawings more so than just renderings?
If if I had, if I had uh. Been part of the application process for one sixty-five Grassley Plain Street from the beginning. I I I wouldn't be able to have a a more refined answer for you, I I don't know. What necessarily entailed for the pre-application meetings and uh the discussions that you guys have had with. Whoever's been here from NIL, NILR A, um, I I I can certainly broach that question to Beth.
I I would appreciate that, I just think it's, it's, it's just clearer that way.
Sure.
Part of any application I've ever been a part of, I'm sure same thing with you, you know, school, when you're, when you're doing a project, you gotta have the architecturals.
Why are we voting on?
Yeah, it feels like we're in the dark sometimes.
We could comment on architectural.
You can comment on it.
No, but we've, you you specifically might have tremendous influence. On the hotel and changing the facade.
Sure.
And it wasn't a requirement, it wasn't a mandate, and they listened and they accepted. So I I do have a question, not related to any of the projects that we've reviewed today, but. In relation to the October eighth.
Yes, so.
The T O D?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Are we gonna get material before that Friday? So what is, what are we discussing, or are we just simply taking public input? What what are we doing?
So, my plan with this T O D discussion, which I hope for. And expect significant public input, I wanna hear from the public, and I wanna hear from everyone on the board. Um, so, uh, I'll tell you now, if you haven't made a meeting, or if you're thinking about missing a meeting, please don't miss this one. Um, I really wanna hear from everyone, as does everyone. We're gonna have a discussion about P O D. We're gonna hear about some of the changes we've made. That are not reflected, I think a lot of the public gets up in arms, they don't realize some of the changes that we've made, we've made significant changes. Um, and we're gonna hear about some issues uh that people have in town with it, I think. Everyone, and I don't wanna get into it now, but I think everyone has their own uh ideas of things they might wanna change, things they wanna improve on. Um. So we're gonna hear from staff on that, um, we're gonna hear from public, we're gonna hear from each other. And. Maybe not at the October eighth meeting, but we're gonna definitely start the conversation, get a lot of testimony taken, and from there. Us as a commission can then decide if we're gonna make more changes, whether they, whatever they might be. Um, and then I'd like, if we're gonna make changes, we would have a public hearing on those changes. Big, whatever those changes weight might be. Um, and then vote on it and pass on it, just just like anything else. So it's just starting the ball rolling, all the information out there, getting everything up to up to speed. So yeah, that's.
To the goals to to tweak the whole.
If needed. If if you, if you feel like it's needed, then yeah. For sure.
Are the changes that were made.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then were made, you know, that we did again recently, are they gonna be put somewhere so people have all the new stuff?
Yes, and that's actually part of the discussion that I've had with Beth in the past, is if you go online right now.
It's not.
And nothing's there.
Right.
None of the changes we've made are there.
Right.
Um, and she has, we've talked about putting, making like an, like a addendum to it, say, changes made. Um, and then yearly, when the yearly review is done, um, which they're right now, she pulled me there behind on. Uh, get that all up to speed uh online, so that it is current. So when you have a member of the public come in here and and being upset that it's still thirty units per acre, and. Well, we just made the change last month, two months ago officially, now it's twenty units an acre, that is a huge change. Um, the height requirements used to be, or the maximums used to be four stories, well, it's three stories unless the underlying zone is even lower. Uh, so really, again, these, these are changes that have been made already to the T O D. Um, that are not reflected on the public information that's out there, and that's another thing that we've talked about, and wanna get that out in public so people know. That we have made changes, we have listened to the public, we all do have concerns, uh, we have taken steps. And are willing to take more steps if needed, um, to make even more changes.
Paul.
Yes, sir.
Be aware of this, i- it's it's a different informational meeting. There's a two-way street, it's it's some information we wanna put out, it's some information we wanna collect from them.
Exactly. Exactly, hundred percent correct. Kinda have the discussion back and forth with the public, um, and then as a, as again, as a board, we can decide. Um, what changes?
We have to really look at it hard with, you know, in a hard way. As opposed to, this is an area that we already have done something with.
What's that?
Uh, we we have to make everybody aware that there are areas we we might wanna look at. To make fu- future changes, or there's areas that we've already changed that people aren't aware of.
Exactly, i- i- and I, and again, I think that's one of the huge issues, is we've made changes that people aren't aware of. Um. So, and we're gonna just bring light to that and and bring light to a lot of other changes, hopefully the parking study is done by then.
Yes, that's, that's the intent.
So, that is a big part of it as well. Um, then we can get all that, everything out in the open, and then we can, we can move forward as. Anything else for commission comments, questions? Uh, any public input? Nope, anyone online?
Motion to adjourn.
Sacagawea, all in favor? Good night, everyone.